November 21st, 2017, Riverton City Council Finance Committee meeting to order at 6:45. The Chair would entertain a motion for the consideration of claims?
I move for the consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $864,197.11. Elon credit card in the amount of $5,092.95. Manual checks in the amount of $2,220.32. Payroll liabilities for November 10th, 2017 in the amount of $217,438.76. For a total of $1,083,856.19.
Second.
It has been properly moved in second. And does anyone have any questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Chair.
Yes.
I do have a question. I'm curious about pocket watches.
Uh huh.
And so, under the Hasko, we spent $340.20 on pocket watches. I assume that the pants and sweatshirt there are somehow considered to be protective clothing? Or fire retardant or something like that that is necessary, but...
Your Honor, the pocket watches are purchases that we make for retiring employees. It's a gift that's given for retirement.
Thank you.
Okay, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And do we have anything else?
None, Your Honor.
All right, thank you so much. Meeting adjourned.
2017 regular meeting of the Riverton City Council ordered at 7:00 PM. Councilmember Hancock will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and after that, Councilmember Peterson will offer an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our loving heavenly Father, we are grateful for this opportunity we have to come together tonight as councilmembers and staff and residents of this great city that we call home. And we are grateful for the opportunity we have to serve in this capacity. We ask you to please be with us tonight to open our minds and soften our hearts that we'll be able to make those decisions, that we'll be able to continue to push the work forward. And we ask you to please watch over this great city. And we ask for these things in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Would the City Clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Lance Cody.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman John Peterson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
I am present. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Kyle Larson this evening. He's out of town.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I declare that we do have a quorum. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in the second that we approve the agenda. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Communications from the floor, citizens comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium, identify yourselves for the record. Okay. Consent agenda. Will the City Clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Your Honor, approval of the minutes, November 7th, 2017, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, November 14th, 2017, special council meeting slash session. Approval of the minutes, November 21st, 2017, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations for November 21st, 2017.
Thank you. Are there any items that require further discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Recommendations from the Finance Committee for bills to be paid in the amount of $864,197.11. The Elon credit card in the amount of $5,092.95. Manual checks in the amount of $2,220.32. And a payroll liabilities for 11/10/17 in the amount of $217,438.76. For a total of $1,083,856.19.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Moved in second that we approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bailey?
I would abstain from the Bailey Enterprises and Lex line items on the Finance Committee recommendations.
Thank you. Any others? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. The next item is a proclamation about shopping and small businesses. As we get closer to the holiday season, we try to support our local merchants. And so, we've got this proclamation on Small Business Saturday. Whereas the government of Riverton, Wyoming celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions that they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States, and they represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States, responsible for 63% of the net new jobs created in the past 20 years. And whereas small businesses employ over 49% of all businesses with employees in the United States, and whereas 89% of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue, and where 87% of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses are critical to the overall economic health of the United States, and whereas 93% of consumers in the United States agree that it is important for people to support the small businesses that they value in their community, and whereas Riverton, Wyoming supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, I therefore, John L. Baker, Mayor of Riverton, Wyoming, do proclaim November 25th, 2017 as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday throughout the year. They always set that up just for the meeting before Thanksgiving. Okay, so the next item is a public hearing and consideration of a retail liquor license transfer of ownership and transfer of location from Safeway Stores 46 Incorporated to 307 Liquors, Inc. Could we have the City Clerk's report, please?
Yes, Your Honor. The City Clerk's office has received an application for a transfer of location and transfer of ownership of a retail liquor license. The application was submitted by 307 Liquors Incorporated. The application that was submitted is requesting a transfer from Safeway Stores 46 Incorporated, which is located at 708 North Federal, to 307 Liquors, which is located at 604 West Main. Mr. Howard is also in the audience if you should have any questions during the public hearing. The Wyoming Liquor Division has certified the application as complete. All fees have been paid and notice to the public has been advertised. Their first staff is recommending your consideration of the transfer of location and the transfer of ownership.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Your Honor, I would move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
Your Honor, seeing as nobody's coming forward, I recommend we close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and I declare the public hearing to be closed. So the Chair would entertain a motion now to approve the retail liquor license transfer of ownership and location.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the liquor license transfer from Safeway Store Number 46 Incorporated to 307 Liquors Incorporated.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Thank you. The next item is off-street parking variance. Petitioner EMS Properties, 103 South Sixth Street East. Could we get the report from the interim Community Development Director, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is 103 South Sixth East. Approximately 10 parallel parking spaces exist on that street right now. They're proposing with this variance that they would add 21, a total of 21 diagonal parking, excuse me, including one disabled parking. Recommendation from staff is that this be approved.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion?
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the variance for EMS Properties, Inc.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Mike.
Your Honor, for Mr. Paskett, I see in the diagram that you supplied that it looks like the traffic lane's going to move from 31.8 feet to after we put the diagonal parking into 24.4 feet. Is that adequate for two lanes of traffic?
Your Honor, yes, it is. That is more than adequate. The volume of traffic on that street is not a high volume for, it's like a through street, primary street, but it is picking up traffic with the businesses on that, in that area. So that would be adequate for the type of use for that street.
Dave, is that street the same width as the one next to the post office where we have the same kind of parking?
I believe it is. I know on North Sixth East, it is the same width, and that's what we currently have there.
Okay.
Is the identical setup that they're proposing to do on the south side of Main Street now, Your Honor.
Your Honor.
Mike?
Curious, Your Honor. Dave, what is, upon approval of this, is the cost of striping borne by the city, or is that borne by the petitioner to make the new parking spaces?
Your Honor, that's up for discussion, but typically that is borne by the city.
Okay. Did we identify any costs associated with that?
Your Honor, we did not.
Do you have any idea as to the approximate cost?
Your Honor, I would like to defer that to Mr. Butterfield. That's his department with the streets, so you're welcome, Kyle.
Your Honor, Council, that's something that we can estimate. We do have a striping line item. We use every dime of that line item, so it would be something that we would just have to budget in. The other thing I would like to mention is, this is the worst time of year to put down any type of paint application because the pavement is so cold. So any paint that would occur would have to be later in the spring. And I'd hate to guesstimate on that, but it wouldn't be terribly expensive.
And we have our own machine, isn't that correct?
Your Honor, that is correct.
Yeah, okay. Mike?
Again, just one question. So mainly, this is for the benefit of EMS properties, but it also does, I see we had a letter from the accountant's office across the street and that kind of stuff. How many square feet of building is the EMS properties? Do we know?
7,400. 7,400.
And is there a requirement that they have a certain amount, or is this just something that they're asking for increased traffic?
Your Honor, they're proposing to allow additional parking. That they are requesting this.
Okay.
Your Honor, this would include parking for their business as well as any other businesses in that area.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Along those same lines, I guess, is there, the picture that's in the packet isn't reflective of the, doesn't seem to be of the entire property. Is there any indication of parking availability within the property boundary as opposed to the city street that's being requested?
Your Honor, there is some parking that is off-street behind the building, on the east side of the building, and on the south side. I do not have the number of spaces available.
Eric, do you know? Can he come up and so he can answer?
Sure, sure. Come up and talk to us.
Nice. When I moved into that spot like 13 years ago, it wasn't an issue.
Tell us, tell us your name.
Oh, my name's Eric Smart.
Okay.
I own EMS properties.
Okay.
And I own Smart Insurance on the corner that rents that building. And when I moved in there 12, 13 years ago, it was just John Hirsch and I and Lorena Kohler across the street. We had very low traffic. Well, now that I've grown and I have four tenants, maybe five, in my building with Edward Jones moving in, and then Verizon Wireless moving in, and then Wyoming Smokehouse, what we're having a problem with is that type of parking. And where the street signs are, it's not being maximized. So people don't pull all the way up and maximize. They pull in there with a crew cab and a horse trailer and they go over to Wyoming Smokehouse and they're there for two hours, you know, and it ties up all the parking one person can. And then on the other side of the street, there's supposed to be two spots, but it's not marked as two, and people pull right in the middle and tie it up to it. So our parking has become somewhat of an issue. It's not a huge issue, but we looked across the street to the north side and seen, well, they got this diagonal parking all the way. And Quest, which is my southern neighbor, they don't need a whole lot of parking, but Albright and Becker and Stoddard, they would really appreciate the parking. And we just need more parking down there for my growing business, Edward Jones, and then I got Leslie Stratmon in there, and then Turf Care. And so, it's, the number of businesses that are on that location have almost doubled in the last 10 years.
Awesome.
Not, most of them aren't high volume, but it's grown.
People still need a place to park.
Yeah, it's a growing issue. And our concern was with Verizon Wireless coming in and hopefully a lot of Patreons coming there and things like that, that it would be accommodating. And plus, for like, you know, when we have the parades and the car show, you know, that's a very popular spot right there on my corner. And it gets tons of use from the public. A lot of post office people park there. It's just, and with that post office, there's not much parking for the post office. I think we all know that. And I think this is going to give that some relief because I have a ton of people that park right in front of my door either way and go get their mail every day. So that's why we're here. That's what we want.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Motion passes. Item number 12, off-street parking variance. Petitioner Iron Works Gym, 505 West Main. Could we get the interim Community Development Director's report, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is for Iron Works Gyms, and I have it as 515 West Main. A little background on this is that in 2005, there was a variance granted. At that time, they were required to have 70 spaces, and they only had 30. The variance was granted. Now they're seeking to build in addition to the building, which would require an additional 55 off-street parking spaces, in which they are not providing any additional off-street parking spaces. Staff's recommendation is that this be denied because of lack of off-street parking spaces.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion?
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the parking variance for Iron Works Gym.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I know Ms. Jordan is in the audience. How many square feet of building will you have when you are all done, if you could?
Hi, I'm Kami Jordan, Iron Works Gym. We're looking at 10,800 for a total in square footage.
And what are you right now, ma'am? I'm sorry.
We're at 6,000 square feet.
So almost double.
Now, we do have several lots that we have gained permission from that have given us written permission. I do have layouts of our addition and copies of the permission if you would care to look.
Well, you can tell us who they are, I guess.
The first one would be Ark and Stone. They've just purchased, I'm sorry, I have just purchased the Fastenal Building, and I'm granting myself 10 parking spots. The other is Ray Apodaca. He's granted us the use of his parking lot across the street. Down the street, roughly a quarter of a mile, not quite a quarter of a mile, the Farmers Insurance, Jeff Carruth and Ryan Gilbertson have given us permission to park in theirs as well. There is a fourth that is pending, but we're waiting for approval.
And that would bring your parking, number of parking places up to what?
I don't have the exact number because we're kind of guesstimating how much some of them are because they are, some of them are dirt lots. We currently have the 30 that surround the building. That will be maintained. I will gain 10 from the Fastenal Building. The Farmers will give us another 15 possibilities. I'm not quite sure about Ray's in that we, it's a dirt.
There's at least 20 there if you have the street curve and then you have inside a lot there. So there's at least one there.
Now, what I'm proposing is that at the time in 2005, the City Council granted us a variance from 70 to 30, which was a 43% discount, if you will. We're asking for a similar. 54 would be in keeping with what the city has already granted us, and 54 is what we can provide. The argument that we would give for this variance is that we are open 24 hours a day. And so, instead of the typical 45 hours that an 8 to 5 shop would be open, we are open 144. So we open at 12:01 AM Monday morning. We go all the way to 11:59 on Saturday. So our clientele have access to the gym from 2:00 in the morning, well, 24 hours. So someone who comes into our facility at 2:00 in the morning will not restrict somebody who comes in at 8:00 at night. Now, we also have 21 cardio pieces, 31 weight pieces, and those are only allowed to have one person on them at a time. So granted, if I was at full capacity, which I'm rarely at, actually, I've never in 12 years been 52 people. If I was at full capacity, I would be able to fit everybody in. Now, the question of additional size in our, putting additional floor space in there, it should be met very easily with the parking that we have. The reason being is because when I exercise, and the typical person needs a wingspan of their height. I'm 5'5", so I need 5 feet, 5 inches of space in all directions diameter around me, plus an additional 1 to 2 feet. The reason being is because we don't want to get somebody's foot in your face. Nobody wants that. So with that in mind, we also cap our classes at around 12 for safety because we don't want our instructors to have to go and monitor 30 people. It's dangerous. So out of safety, we do not allow 50 people in a class. It's just not realistic. So we keep our quality high and we're able to have small classes. So we're able to facilitate a lot of people's needs, but it's really spread out.
I guess, question for Mr. Paskett. How did we come up with the parking needs? Because it sounds like to me like if she puts 50 people in the building, it's pretty much full, and that means they'd all drive one and a half cars to the location. So I guess, where did we come up with that number?
Your Honor, Mike, in the Riverton Municipal Code is a table that we use to give Your Honor, Mike, in the Riverton Municipal Code is a table that we use to give us the square footage per parking space required. And so it's, basically, that's how it is the square footage of the building, is then divided by that number to come up with the number of off-street parking spaces required.
Okay. So is that the same as a restaurant or a retail store? Or, I mean, are they all the same? Or is?
They all vary, but in the commercial section and for this particular one, that would be similar, yes.
Would anybody care to look at our, our paperwork? Am I allowed to approach?
Sure, sure. You got copies for everybody. That'd be fine.
Yes.
So what you'll be looking at as you open it, the first one was, I do have the original letter that, that Ray has given me for permission. This was just an insert so that you could see that there, it was coming. Then the next one is from Jeff Carruth for his business and for his building. And the second is for, for Ark and Stone. The large paper below is a map aerial view and then an aerial view of our business. Now, the entrance is at the top middle and the back entrance is at the bottom of your page. We've worked with many people in the city and with Ray and our architect to make sure that we were adhering to codes as closely as possible and that we were a very safe facility. Certain experiences of my life have made me very sensitive to that and I want people to feel safe.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
So you've talked about the other ones with Fasten and Ray Apdak and stuff?
Yes.
On here, you've got Parretts and then you've got like the lots behind?
Yes.
Are those ones, ones that you use as well? And then where's, like, are you using these lots from Parretts?
In the rear, we do not use those. We at one time sold them. I'm told they're up for sale, but we do not need to purchase them. We've chosen to get permission. I'm told there is some opposition based on the, that fact that there is a sale that would, they'd like to make, but I don't think I'll be making that purchase. So we have sought permission from the other lots around town and they've granted those. So we didn't need to make a hundred thousand dollar purchase.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that answer kind of what you were thinking?
Yeah.
Got any more questions for Ms. Jordan?
I, maybe. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if this is directed, so whoever wants to answer it. So the, the number of parking spots allotted consist of both private and city street access, is that correct?
Your Honor, Mr. Godey, the off-street parking is exactly that. It's off the street. It's not on the curb. Those parking spaces do not count towards off-street parking.
So even, I guess I'm trying to understand, so on North Sixth Street West, any parking that occurs there isn't counted towards anybody in that block, any business owners in that block? Or is it a shared, or it's not counted in as?
Your Honor, Mr. Godey, it is not counted towards the off-street parking. Streets are just for that. They're for traffic, they're for, but they're not to be used and counted for the off-street parking. Those spaces are supposed to be completely off their city right away onto the, the individual's lots.
Okay. So the number requirement is specific to the property of off-street parking? That number, the number that's required?
Your Honor, that's based on the square footage of the building to determine the number of off-street parking spaces required.
Ms. Peterson?
So a couple of questions. How many daily come into the gym? How many people come in? Do you have an estimate of how many come through the door?
I'd like to answer that, but that's kind of proprietary and I know that that's a difficult, if you guys need me to, I can-
Just, just an average. There's something you think, one hundred and fifty, two hundred, three hundred?
In my system, it shows who we've logged in during the day and that is from nine in the morning until seven at night. So I would say roughly, let's just throw a number out as fifty. Now, that does not get counted against or with those who are logged into our system through the passcodes after hours because they're two separate systems. So those people are only who we check in from nine in the morning till seven at night. And then from there, there are the people who are checking in at two in the morning, but they're, there's no desk attendant. So let's just roughly say fifty people.
So you have fifty people go to your gym every day? I, I'm trying to figure how many people go to your gym every day, just on an average. Two hundred? I mean, every time I drive by the parking lot, people on it, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's the same one, it's just working out that much, or?
My, I, let me give you a range. Let's say fifty to a hundred people in a day. I, I want to just throw a range out there because some days we're packed and then other days there's no one. So.
Okay.
And that also changes variably because of holidays, weather conditions, sporting events in town, seasonal. It could be summer and there's a lot of things going on and we have lower levels. New Year's comes and it jumps. So I, I just don't want to be misleading. I apologize for not-
Oh, that's fine. I'm sure a number, but from-
Solid number.
A whole month of January and then the- And then my next question is-
Yes.
For Mr. Paskett. So you have in here that you recommend the council deny this. Is it because of the square footage table that you're using?
Your Honor, yes, that's correct. Based on the required off-street parking and that the, the variance was already granted to this facility.
Right.
And now we're increasing the square footage, but we're not increasing the off-street parking.
But she just told us. I, I guess I'm having issues with this because you have in here an alternative, provide a written agreement with adjacent properties, what she's done, correct?
Yes.
I'm, unless I'm misreading something.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
If you read on that, it says that that, those parking spaces are to be recorded with that property. So it has to be a legal and binding document that those parking spaces are always available to that property, whether Ms. Jordan owns it or whoever owns that property for that use, that those spaces in these other lots are available from this point forward.
And?
Go ahead. Please, help me.
Does, does that mean that they're not then usable for that business because now they're committed to the, the petitioner's business? I mean, is that right terminology?
Your Honor, yes, that is correct. Those spaces are now designated for this property. They're no longer designated for the property there. So now you would, we would have to go back and verify that the properties that these additional parking spaces are coming from have adequate spaces and that they would be available to give up that many lots.
And not be out of compliance now with their own requirement by code to have off-street parking?
Your Honor, that's correct.
Your Honor. Mike?
I, I guess to me, it seems extremely hypocritical for us to have just approved changing the parking on a public street to increase the capacity for Mr. Smart, which I have no problem with at all. But then we're going to turn around and give Ms. Jordan, who has her own parking spaces, she's not asking for the public to provide her any additional spaces. She's not asking for us to repaint the street, change the traffic pattern. You know, I, I guess to me, she wants to expand her business to increase the usage. I mean, the only person that would suffer in this is her own business because she's the one that would hypothetically lose membership if she did not have enough room for people to park.
You gotta walk a quarter mile to go to the gym.
And, and again, yeah, it'd be a little ironic if somebody had to walk too far to the gym.
Never do cardio before weights.
Right. So I guess, so with that being said, I think we should grant the variance, myself.
I concur.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, okay, so. I, I see that. And, okay, so I do have a question, Dave. Okay, so at some time in the past, this building was a automobile repair shop, wasn't it?
Your Honor, that's correct.
Okay. And, and so were they under the same parking requirements that?
Your Honor, excuse me, Your Honor, that was so far back, I cannot tell you that. But I do know that in the Riverton Municipal Code, that off-street parking requirements have been there for some time. But I couldn't tell you what that square footage is. That square footage would actually be, what it is right now is one, one off-street parking space for each three hundred and fifty square feet of, of building. And that's for this type of, of business. If you go into a different one, it may be one square feet for one thousand square feet of building. So the numbers are not comparable. Okay?
Okay. All right, so I, I guess my concern is, and have you, you may at this point in time plan to be there forever. Okay. But at some point, you may decide, oh, I've got to have a much bigger facility than this and so I'm going to move. I'm going to go someplace else. And then you'd want to be able to sell that building and then not have enough parking spaces in order to make that work for somebody else. That would, in my mind, handicap you in being able to turn the real estate. Sure.
So I'll address two of those things.
Okay.
I'm a fourth generation, fifth generation, who's come from Riverton, Wyoming. I am a widow and I have purchased the building. We purchased the building in 2005 and we've made a home of that. My home is here, my business is here, and I just purchased another building. The intention is to stay. Now, I will also clarify that I do have personal reasons to go elsewhere. I have the opportunity to move down Fort Collins and to take my business there. I can make a lot more money there. I can be a little freer there. I like it here. People come here to vacation. We get to live here. So with that in mind, I have no intentions of leaving. But I will state that, yes, if the, if it becomes difficult for me to do business, I'm about to invest a half a million dollars into an expansion that should show the commitment that I have to myself and my family and my business and my community, that I have all intentions of staying here. But if I can't get the variance, it does make it difficult. And so it, we've had a good relationship with our neighbors. I spoke with several of them. We share a lot of customers. They eat in the restaurants next door. They have insurance next door. They use the pawn shop a little ways down. So we've had a really great relationship with the parking in that sometimes there's an empty spot and people who aren't my customers park in my spots. But like I said, it is a nice way for me to perhaps gain under customer later. So we have, yes, we're aware of the fact that we can't make more ground. But the commitment is there and hopefully the investment is able to be made so that we can build up our community. When people come to a facility, you guys are very well aware, I'm sure, when they come to a town, they're looking for schools, gyms, parks, recreation, churches and the like. So we're on Main. We're very visible and we get a lot of people coming just for the day, passing through. I've had people snap photos of their groups in front of my logo just because they thought it was cool. So people are drawn to my business for many reasons. And yes, I'd love to have more parking. I, it's wonderful to have more parking, but unfortunately, that's beyond my control. So at this point, I believe that it would be reasonable to ask for the variance in the same manner that we gained it the other way in 2005.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Parret?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Your Honor and counsel, my name is Fred Parret and Senior, and I'm here in behalf of my son and Yoko Parret that don't live here anymore. And they started Parret's Restaurant fifteen, sixteen years ago. And back in 2007, they purchased the two lots behind Iron Works. And we oppose this completely because of where everybody's parking on our lot. There's, sometimes there's twenty to thirty to forty cars down there in the evening. Kami was allowed a variance back in 2005. They purchased both of these lots from Iron Works in 2007. They came, they came to the city, Fred and Yoko, they were going to add on to Parretts and they said they had to have more parking. Larry Baumann, Dave Young, it was kind of the transition at that time. So Fred and Yoko had to, you know, find additional parking before they could add on. So they approached Iron Works, Kami, and purchased the two lots. These two lots are up for sale for the same price. We've taken the, they've taken the blunt of the taxes for ten years, keeping people off of it as best you can. There's an electrical company, the building that Kami just bought, which was the-
Fasten?
Yeah. They, they were in there. Everybody's been using it and nobody wants to pay for it. And we're not asking for any more money, so this is a feasible thing. Did approach Kami. I, we didn't know about this, you know, until what, a week ago or whatever it was? And anyway, we approached her and said, hey, the lot's for sale. Dan Olson at Parretts was kind of interested at the beginning because we checked into different things that were maybe all four of these businesses, her two, Parretts, the electrical supply. I mean, these two lots sit right in the middle and there's only a twenty-foot alleyway in there. I think that's, is that right, Dan? And it's, you know, there's, there's, there's no room there for anybody to get around. I mean, everybody's backing around and pulling in there and it's, it's, it's a mess now. So we would like to express our opinion that we oppose this because we came to the city and, or they did, my, my son, and, and had to, had to buy these lots to add on, so.
So.
Any questions to me? I don't know what else to say.
No, I'll keep it to myself.
No?
These two, these two lots sit right in the middle. There's no, no two, there's no other property around. So they only have their parking around the front. There's the insurance company and then there's the street on both ends.
Go ahead, Sean.
So you bought those two lots so you guys could expand?
Did, excuse me.
You bought the two lots so you could expand?
Yes, yes.
But now you want to sell them?
Yeah. They did, Fred and Yoko are, sold the business. They sold Parretts about three years ago.
Okay.
And they're, they don't live here anymore.
Did they do the, did they expand and did they do the remodel?
No, they never did. No. And, and, and also along with these two lots, the city had told them that they needed a, a plan. So they spent another three or four thousand with Gary Burnett and, and Jerry Cruz, Cardinal Engineering, to design the parking lot. So it's a mess down there, you know. So it's a mess down there, you know, for people to, to try to get around. And, you know, in fact, I recommended to my son, I said, hey, you, we need to fence this off. Nobody wants to pay for it, nobody wants to, to, you know, to, to do anything, and so I said, you know, put it for sale, and, you know, put up a temporary fence, and, and, because when you go down that alley, if you were to see where the corners are, I mean, you just like go, wow, um, doesn't even look, you know, the dumpsters are all on this side, and if the fence goes up, there's, there's nothing there. We put up a, uh, we're trying, I hired a, uh, handyman guys, and they didn't get the fence put up, but we put up a little temporary concrete block, bam, two days later, somebody already hit it, and it was three, it was three feet in on the property line. So we realized that that's going to, going to be that, but it's going to be a jam, it's going to be a mess. It ended up solving all the problems, you know, they're expanding, buying buildings, they need to, need to pay for the parking, bottom line.
Let's see, right there.
So.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Your Honor, council members, I'm Ray Apodaca, and I've been working with Kami for probably about six months on the project, but she's kind of in a unique situation here, because here's the deal. Coming up, um, West Main, that curb along the administration building there, the old high school, no one parks there. So all that, even though it's not attached to her business, people can park there, you come up the, the street there to the, the red light, and if you take a, a right, both sides of that street, or there's hardly anyone there, except when there's administration, uh, meeting. So, and then another thing about the square footage with the building, half of her building is taken up by machines. So it's one of them unique situations where, okay, she's good, she wants to add shower rooms to make her facility more accommodating. But, you know, under these different codes, for instance, Mike, he's got a huge building down there, and he needs that big building, because he has big equipment in there, and they pull cars, trucks in. And in the code book, it doesn't really, it doesn't say, um, like a workout place, it just says gymnasiums, restaurants, and so they have to kind of decide what it's going to come under. But when they're deciding this stuff, they've got to look, you know, square footage, and what part of it's taken up with, and, and what I'm saying is, half of it's taken up with equipment. And then there is plenty of parking around there, because the street's right there, even though it's not attached to the, the facility, and it's going to stay like that. It's been like that since the high school, since they tore the old high school down. There's, you know, it's there, the parking's there, but it's not attached to her property. And then as far as, you know, what Fred's saying, I pulled in there to talk to Kami, and he's shooting himself in the foot if, I mean, if she puts a fence between her property and Perret's, and noon, there's people that are eating at Perret's, you know, in front. Mike, you've probably went there before, I've done it, and you park there. I don't go in the Iron Works, I go to Perret's. They don't go out back and park, they want to pull in the front. So, I mean, it is a mess, but I, I tell you what, neighbors got to be neighbors, and if they don't want anyone in them lots right there, it'd be a simple solution, just fence it off and put no trespassing on it. I watch television, I see them, you know, they have a tow truck come up, and they tow them off, go down here and park at night, down here at the, uh, the breadboard, and see what happens. You'll get towed away. So, you know what, it's...
Experience.
What I'm saying is that the neighbors got to be neighbors, and I think Kami has, you've let, you've never had them towed off, right, when they park there? Okay, but here's the thing. I know what Kami's talking about when she says she could move to Fort Collins, and she's got a good reason to, to move to Fort Collins. Well, you know what, Safeway's closed, and we got to do anything we can to keep this town going. And, because I tell you what, it's, things are drying up, and we need to, to help each other.
I was thinking about that, that Iron Works logo in place of the Safeway sign.
Oh, there you go.
Money parking over there.
Money parking there.
Well...
Just a smidge more money.
Yeah.
Anyway, you know, it, it comes down to, uh, kind of some common sense, and, you know, things change, and I just think we need to do anything we can to help, you know, that, uh, Iron Works is right there on the main drag, and I know a lot of people, I've got relatives, they come here and they want to work out, they go up there, of course, they go across the street and have a coffee from my wife's coffee shop, and then, anyway, I think we can work it out, but, you know, it's up to you guys.
Thank you, thank you. So, so I've got a couple of questions for Dave. Okay, help, help me understand, so this is a variance. So, so that gets attached to the deed in some way?
Your Honor, that's one of the alternatives.
Okay.
You do not have to make it that way. That would be one of the alternatives, is that, as like I had told you earlier, this property could sell, or it could stay there. So that's, that's why the parking spaces need to be attached to this facility, so that there is at least, and you can grant the variance to allow whatever you choose. But right now, by our Riverton Municipal Code, with that addition, they would be required to have 125 spaces.
Okay, so then if we pass this, if we said yes, we'll go ahead with this, then that doesn't create, uh, an issue later down the trail with an occupancy permit when it's...
If, if that business was to sell, and it was not to change whatsoever, and it was a gym or a facility just like it is, it would remain the same. If a new occupancy chose to go in there, then that may cause it to have to re-get additional off-street parking spaces. Because now it could be a change of use, which opens it up completely, whereas...
So you could tie this variance to the, to the current use?
Correct, you could.
I'm, uh, Dr. Craig Beck, retired school administrator, I'm, call myself a professional breather. That's breathe. I get paid to breathe. Um, I want to follow up on a point about the square footage. I, I just don't see that as a criteria in this case. Have you been in there?
Sure.
Over half the space is taken up by equipment. So as a user, when you go in there, if the place is busy, you leave, because you're not, you didn't come to stand around and watch everybody else work out.
Yeah.
You came to work out, so you adjust your schedule. So I find the square footage for, uh, to be a little bit, well, it just doesn't fit this case to me. For a restaurant, you could cram all kinds of people in there, but it's not. Um, and that would be the use. As far as in the future, I don't know how you can hold Kami responsible for what happens in the future. Do I get to hold you responsible for what happens in the future? No. So, you know, we've got a code. Okay, we have a code. Does that mean we live and die by the code? I would certainly hope not. I would hope a little bit of logic could prevail here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perret.
Yep.
I'm going to say the same thing again.
Thank you. You know, the thing, the, the thing that I look at here is, uh, you know, nobody wants to see anybody leave Riverton as far as a business. I mean, nobody's looking at that, but the people have been parking there. Ray's, Ray talks about people parking across the street. They're going, they're going to the gym, or they're going to Perret's, or they're going to the electrical supply, or, or the new place that Kami's going to open up on the corner. They got to have a place to park, and they're going to go to the fastest spot. They've been there, the, you know, that's, this is where they've been parking. Perret's also, they've, they've been going in there, but it's also been a lot of them from the gym. And, you know, so back in '07, the economy wasn't all that great, when my son had, had to buy the lots. So I just hope you consider it. I mean, it isn't, it isn't like there isn't an alternative for her to, to do something and to, to solve the problem down there.
Sure.
You know, I think the, I think a lot of these businesses are backed up to do, the, the new building that she just bought, the Fastenal building, and the electrical supply, they can't even get in, they can't, they can't even get into the, the back of those buildings, um, which was really poorly designed, and so those buildings are, that's a tough deal for them. I mean, I don't know why I wouldn't want a building like that when you couldn't get in the back door, you know, with any, any kind of a small truck, so.
Sure. Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
You bet, you bet. Somebody else? Go ahead.
I go to the gym up there.
Yeah?
And I've been there quite a few times, and in my mind, I'm talking about the code, I think it's a little shaky. In my mind, at that gym, has anyone else been to the gym? Have you ever seen more than 25 cars at that place? No. So I don't know what they need a hundred and some parking places for.
I've seen more than 25 when some of them were overeating at Perret's.
Or a bean.
I'm Brad Bolander, and I'll just, uh, give you my last 10 years' experience, um, belonging to the gym. Not once have I gone there and not been able to park either in the front or the side. And my wife and I go there, and we often park on Kami's property and work out, then we go to Perret's and try to eat healthy, and unfortunately, they serve Blue Moon, so we don't always get that job done. But I've parked at Iron Works Gym and eaten at Perret's, because we're patrons of both establishments, and it seems to work fine. And since I've retired, I can go anytime, but when I was working, it's five in the morning or six at night, and I still never had a problem. So I don't think the parking is an issue, because, you know, like Craig said, if all the machines are full, the weight room's full, you just leave, because you need space. Thank you.
Your Honor and City Council and administrators, my name is Chuck Starks. I'm owner of StarTech Corporation, and, and, uh, a number of years ago, we, the city fathers throughout many years had wanted to bring plastic injection molding to Riverton, and they, um, uh, they worked on that off and on for quite a number of years, and there was not enough business here to sustain one. Well, with our StarTech and our roller manufacturing, where we had built up a total of 80 employees, and, um, so we had what we needed to develop legacy molding, which we did. And then we, Rob Wright, uh, was our engineer on that and, and manager, and he subsequently bought legacy molding from, from me. Our families, Kami's, uh, family, my family, I'm not prejudiced, I happen to be Kami's grandpa, so, um, but anyway, our families built StarTech, and we built legacy molding. And at the, um, so we were able to accomplish what the city had wanted accomplished for That didn't mean we were great, it meant their need was there, and, and we were able to, to do that. Private businesses could do what needed to be done, and the city wanted done. What I am leading up to is private business at a time when we've had some businesses leave town, and more are, um, expressing some concern. Kami wants to expand business, and the parking situation, I understand the, the laws a little bit, and, uh, and that's, you know, they have to be dealt with. If variance can be, um, made at this time, um, the parking, I'm sure, can be worked out to where it won't be any hazard to the city, any liability to the city, nor will it, um, be an unmanageable situation. I, with Kami's confidence in the community, she, she just said, she, uh, just purchased another building there. Well, with that building comes considerable parking space there, if it's organized properly. And, um, whether it's inside the building or outside the building, it's parking space. Anyway, um, I, I just would hope that we keep our eye on the future and the development and the growth. As Kevin Krasnick said, well, the administrative idea incorporated, um, said 95% of our efforts to keep and build industry and, and, um, businesses and jobs here in our community, 90%, 95% of our efforts should be in, with the existing businesses. And, um, so I, I agree with him 100%. So I'd just like to, um, leave this with you for your consideration, as you consider granting variance that would be no harm to the city and would be a great asset to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. One more.
Hello, I'm Sean Jordan, I'm CPA here in town, work for Red and Canaan Associates, and I just need some clarification here. Uh, we're talking about parking, how many square feet is that? Like, did he say 350 for every?
No, I'm, no, for this space, uh, one space per 80 square feet.
For 80 square feet, so you're operating off 10,000, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so 80 square feet, um, I don't know, who works out? Okay, so I'm sitting here, six feet, six feet, you know, so if I only work in my square, that doesn't make a lot of sense, so I'm at 36. But the machine, obviously a bench press, you know, it's more than six feet, so we walk them over here from the other, let me spread this apart. There's my work area. Is that 80 square feet? That's more than 80 square feet. I've been in those gyms? I've measured them, I've did this calculation, and it's like you're going on here. The equipment is more than half the space. So I'm sitting here on this bench press, but I need to fit 125 people in there, so I have a bench press, and two of us are going to use that same time.
We, I, I think we understand that, I think we understand that.
Okay, so I'm, I'm confused, why is that even a rule?
Well...
Why don't we change that?
Okay, the problem is, the problem is that the use of the building can change.
Okay.
Okay? And so you could change the building into some other purpose under the same zoning code.
Okay.
Okay? Where you would have to have that, that kind of parking in order to make that building work.
Okay.
Okay? See, and so that's where the problem comes in, is, is that, is that under a particular kind of zoning, there's a whole bunch of uses that are possible for that structure.
All right.
And so the fact that currently, that structure is not being used in a way that demands that much parking...
But in the future, it will.
It could be changed with new ownership to something else.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that's the whole concern.
So that's where the, that's where the concern comes in, and then, and so then, if you, the, the challenge, we're going to expand the building and cover up some ground with the building, which is right now seven, eight parking places, maybe? Okay? So we've lost some parking places. Now, those are parking places that Iron Works currently controls, okay? Whereas the parking places that are across the street next to the coffee shop, they don't control those parking places. So next year, Mr. Apodaca's wife... So, next year, Mr. Apodaca's wife could sell that business, okay, to somebody else. Who could say, "I don't want you parking over here anymore"?
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks for clarification.
All right. Okay, and so then you wind up in this situation where you don't have enough spaces in order to make the thing work.
All right.
All right. So, those are the challenges, and that's why there's rules, zoning rules, on the way you do things, is to try to make sure that there's enough, you know, places to park. And my concern isn't, isn't, you know, and I don't think we, I, I guess, I haven't polled, so I don't know, but my concern is not related to, is the number of parking places the right number of parking places? That's, that's not exactly what, what concerns me, okay? My concern is, is that, is that are we being good neighbors with, with Pretz and the insurance guy that shares the lot and that type of thing? So, then if you get to the point where nobody can get into Pretz to have lunch because Iron Works has got all those parking places taken up, because they don't have, have not provided enough off-street parking to meet their own needs, you see? Then what we're doing is we are hurting another business, which is a locally owned business.
Yep.
Okay? And so, those are, those are the issues that we're trying to balance out and to make sure it's going to work out for us, okay? And, and, gee whiz, we don't want anybody to move to Fort Collins, Colorado. I've been down there, come on! Okay, so what happens to us is, is that, so we sit around the table here and we try to figure that out, okay? And part of the problem is that we're all kind of novices to the zoning, just like you are, and so we need to talk about this quite a little bit, and it's been a good lesson for us to learn how all this comes together, okay?
So, is our zoning consistent with other towns the same size? Or other communities?
Who knows? Who knows?
Do you know that?
You ready to vote?
Yeah, I'm totally ready to vote, before they shoot themselves in the leg, let's vote.
Ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so do you see any, council, do you see any need to make any change in the motion that we have? What do we have? We have, we have a motion on the floor that Mike said.
To approve it.
To approve it.
To approve this petition for variance, and Tim seconded that. Are you happy with that? Say we're going to approve a variance here? Do you want to tie it to as long as Iron Works has got the property and, and operated as a gym? Do you, or do you just want to say, "No, we're just going to ignore the city code here with regards to this particular property from now into the future"?
Your Honor, I would be willing to amend my motion to say that the variance would be tied to the use of the building, so as long as it is used as a gym, as it is now, that that variance would stay in place. So, if they sold the building and it became a restaurant, that would be start over from scratch.
I second the amendment.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded, so is there any discussion on that amendment?
No.
Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, the amendment, the motion has been amended, all those in favor of the motion is amended. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Variance is issued. Thank you.
Joe, I got a stake for this snow removal policy.
Yeah. Everybody asked, look at that, I'll get out and leave. Everybody, I don't care about snow removal.
Mr. Apodaca, you're a regular up here now.
Hey, we, hey, we got your next, we got your seat right up here, right?
He was up here last.
Okay. All right, the next item is number thirteen, adoption of ordinance number seventeen dash zero-two-seven, third and final reading, rezone petitioner Habitat for Humanity. Would the city clerk please read ordinance seventeen dash zero-two-seven by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, proposed ordinance number seventeen dash zero-two-seven on third and final reading, and ordinance amending the zoning district map of the city of Riverton, Wyoming, designated the rezone of lots one A, two A, three A, four A, block two, replata blocks two, four, and five, College Hill Development, to the city of Riverton, Fremont County, Wyoming, from residential PUD planned unit development to R2 residential.
The chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance seventeen dash zero-two-seven on third and final reading.
Your Honor, make a motion that we adopt ordinance number seventeen dash zero-two-seven on third and final reading.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance seventeen dash zero-two-seven on third and final reading, is there any discussion on this? Okay, would the city clerk please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Yes.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Yes.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Yes.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Yes.
Councilman Lance Cody.
Yes.
Mayor John Baker.
Aye, you vote yes, and the motion passes. Uh, the next item is the approval of snow removal policy for the city of Riverton. Could we get the Public Works Director's report, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Before you this evening is an amended copy of the snow and ice control plan and its draft form. Uh, as you are well aware, the city council considered this policy on October tenth and November fourteenth. Uh, following the November fourteenth meeting, staff has made the recommended changes that council, uh, directed staff to do so, or, excuse me, directed the staff to change. Specifically, in that meeting, council directed staff to more heavily weight implementation of a combined snow plow approach to plowing to the center of the streets, specifically in areas or street couriers that have residential and business properties with several accesses. Uh, we believe that we've presented a, and amended this policy to all your direction. The new draft, I hope you've had a chance to review, does have amended tables for the plowing priorities, we updated the traffic counts from 2013 to 2016, we also reduced the size of those for clarity of, um, understanding and for ease of reading. Before, we had it listed almost by block, because each block has a different traffic count. We reduced that, we just did the main corridor and listed the highest traffic count. We also put in the table the method of plowing, whether it be plowed to the side or to the center. Uh, furthermore, we updated the map attached to the policy, we feel that it is now easier to read in comparison with one, the one that was proposed prior. Without taking too much of your time, I do feel that we've amended the policy to meet the direction that we've received, and, um, we ask that the council approve the proposed snow and ice control policy, and also, we recommend in a separate motion that the city council direct staff to pursue the purchase of a used dump truck with a plow attachment from Campbell County. Uh, last time I reported that that was a five cubic yard bed, and I inaccurately reported that it is closer to a ten cubic yard bed, and I want to make sure that was clear.
Big truck.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Um, okay, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the snow removal policy as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion.
Do we have to talk about it anymore?
No, but I, I just did want to say thank you. Okay? This has been very difficult, and I appreciate your work on this, and, and this is, this is excellent work. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor, thank you for your direction.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Okay?
Your Honor.
My only hesitation in voting on this was, okay, that as long as we don't have the policy, maybe it wouldn't snow. We're done, okay?
I would move that we direct staff to pursue the purchase of the aforementioned equipment.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I got a little discussion.
Little discussion.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Give Mike quicker.
I only have forty-five minutes or so to talk. Can you give us the specifics on the, on the truck and plow since, again, so it's around a ten-yard dump truck with what size plow on it?
Uh, the plow blade, um, is going to be about ten foot long, unfortunately, I don't have that exact measure, measurement, but it will be about ten feet long. It's a two thousand and six interline, um, vehicle.
And so it could be used during the summer as a dump truck and plowing snow and hauling snow off, and very multi-use type of equipment.
Your Honor, that's correct, and international, interline, I knew that sounded wrong. So, yes, thank you.
Ms. Peterson?
So, I'll do the fiscally smart thing, and this money's already was set aside, right? Go ahead, you.
Your Honor, this money was not included in the current fiscal year budget, however, in working with Mrs. Harris, we've been able to find, um, available funds to make this purchase happen.
That's what I meant to say, I remember, I remember something mentioned about it, so I just want to make sure that we have that somewhere in our.
When, when we get to that point, do we need to have a, uh, hearing to amend the budget?
Your Honor, we do not.
Do not, okay. Unanticipated revenues, I thought maybe we had to show that we could spend it, but we'll wait until the end of the year to even it up, okay?
And, Your Honor, we did, I think, saved enough on our street sweeper purchase to even pay for the truck probably, so I don't think there's any problem at all.
Maybe.
Your Honor, unfortunately, we cannot use those funds because they're in an enterprise account, just for clarification.
There you go. Nice try.
I wish we could.
Okay, okay.
It's left pocket money, not right pocket.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, we are going to pursue the truck. Okay, council committee reports and council members roundtable, Ms. Gibbon.
Okay, so the only thing that I have is for the region four meeting is December sixth at the Ram Coda in Casper, it's from three to eight o'clock. Does anybody want to go? Does anybody know if they're going? I'm going, I think you're going.
Who's going to try to go?
Going.
I'll be gone.
I'm a maybe.
I'm a maybe.
Seventy-seven point three percent maybe.
Thanks for that.
So, are we?
Okay, so we'll touch base like.
So, you are, are you thinking about going to the meeting and then coming home that night?
Yeah.
Okay, not staying over?
No.
You're driving?
Yes.
Nice.
I'm not going.
I was like, why?
Sixty-two point four percent maybe.
Oh, my gosh, moving on, that's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, all right.
This is what tired looks like.
Sean?
Um, you know, I.
Come on, it's only eight fifty.
Come on. You can do this.
Okay, so I, I just want to say, I sat here last week and I was very quiet during the snow removal, and I went back through and I looked at some of my emails, and I, I truly want to say thank you to Kyle and his staff for the work they put on that. I, last year, we got a lot of compliments about how great our city staff was and how they were getting the snow moved. I'm not taking anything away, it was said about anybody who was in front of us last week, they all had valid points.
Yep.
But I'm glad that we have somebody here that is willing to try something new to see if he can make it work. Did it work? Eh, maybe it would have worked if we wouldn't have had record snowfall for the millennium, but, um, you know, I, I'm grateful to you and your crew for trying to do something different, trying to find a way to make it work better, to save us money and everything like that, so I just want to say thank you for you and your staff and everything that you did last year and this year, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Um, I had the pleasure of attending the Wyoming Aeronautics Meeting in Cheyenne with Tony and Kyle and the mayor, um, so we got to hear a lot about what the plan is for aviation in Wyoming, and they're looking at some different ways of handling the shortage of airlines, and, you know, so Riverton is not alone in this battle, the, all of the towns that have airlines, with maybe the exception of Jackson and Casper, have the same issues that we're following, and they, they have some solutions, I think, that coming down the pike will hopefully be good for us. And so, they do have a, YDOT does have dedicated staff to making sure this all happens and to make it the best that we can. So, I think, I think that's a good thing for all of us, um, I think it's good for the economy of Riverton and Fremont County, and that's all I had on that. Um, I did attend a meeting of some concerned citizens in, in Riverton that are looking at all the different options regarding a rec center, and, and again, so I think that talk is starting again, and it's just in its very preliminary beginnings, um, but again, I think that's something that I've heard a lot of comments about from citizens and something they would like to have. Uh, they don't have near as many answers to how we're going to pay for it all, but, you know, we'll cross that road when we get there and figure out what we really want or need, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Tim?
I had an opportunity to meet with, uh, Mr. Tolsted last week, and I just wanted to say I think he's doing an excellent job. There's a lot that he's doing behind the scenes, trying to make sure that we're doing things right, and I just wanted to say how much I appreciate him, and I think he's, uh, really got, trying to get a good bead on things, and I've heard a lot of good things about, uh, everything he's been doing from other senior staff as well, so, doing well, Tony.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Cody, anything today?
Yeah, a few things, actually. A week ago Monday, on the thirteenth, I attended the CWC Ag, Equine, and Animal Science Focus Group, uh, representing the city. Um, I think several people were gone to that meeting in Cheyenne that Mike referenced. CWC's in the middle of pursuing this new complex and soliciting input from as many sectors in the community as possible, and, um, really trying to develop a state-of-the-art complex, so it was a good opportunity to, um, start, you know, really keep the conversation going. There were members of Economic Development, State Legislature, Shoshone Tribe were there to really give some input, uh, so, um, it was the last of the forums, and I'm sure more is coming down the pike, it's, it's a, uh, it's, it is definitely moving forward and, uh, plans are firming up, um, but as with everything that big, it takes time, so we'll see how it moves forward. Uh, second thing, uh, this past Saturday, on the eighteenth, I attended the Moccasin Lake Challenge Run. My wife was here a couple of weeks ago and, and sent out an invite, uh, there were, um, Tim was going to show up, he said, and then it was really cold that day, so he just said, no, I.
He heard run.
I, I said that wasn't, I didn't say that was my excuse.
That's true.
There were excuses made by people I would have gone with.
There was around a dozen community members, uh, and then a number of them, as well as additional volunteers, helped feed, uh, a Thanksgiving meal to around forty homeless and needy members of the community, uh, so I really think that was, uh, a really cool thing. It happened in City Park at the band show, so, um, it was all put together and coordinated by volunteers, so that was a great thing. I know Eric was involved, uh, police department helped a little bit with some traffic control and, and just being, being there, and which is appreciated. And then the last thing, uh, just to expand a little bit on Mike and the rec center, uh, there was another meeting last night that I was able to attend, um, the, the, you know, Mike really indicated that this is a, a grassroots effort, kind of developing, um, new, uh, it really got started in Lander, and, uh, the Lander group, uh, last night was present at this meeting where really wanted to gauge the temperature of Riverton as to partnering, and, uh, really looking at a countywide system rather than just in Lander, just in Riverton, or just in a one or two communities, to really recognize the value of a countywide system. Uh, so I really liked hearing that, um, and, and wanted to just recognize that, uh, as, as long as there's been a history, there's been a rivalry between Lander and Riverton, and I think in this type of an effort, uh, we, uh, we need to work together. And, um, so I'm looking forward to more on that coming down the pike. Uh, a survey has gone out on Facebook, and there has been, uh, some really good responses so far, more effort, uh, in surveys in the community is planned, uh, with some hard copy, um, stuff out for people who don't Facebook, uh, so be watching for that in the community, encourage people to give feedback, we really need to know what people are interested in seeing in the community. Uh, the next meeting for the group is December fourth, uh, at six-thirty PM here in City Hall, so, um, really would encourage everyone to attend, give their input. Uh, first and foremost, I, I really wanted to, to message this, uh, that the intention of everyone that I've talked to so far that's been involved is to, to pursue this effort without proposing a new tax. I think. I think that's a big part of what's likely to make it successful, but it's also a part of, that's gonna make it harder, and it's gonna require a lot of work and a lot of effort, and I think on the model of the skate park and the splash pad, uh, it can be done, it absolutely can be done, 'cause a lot of people would've said those couldn't be done, and they will be done. So, I think we can make a rec center, um, a, a reality in this community and in Lander as well. Uh, they already have a building and are moving forward, so they're a few months ahead of us, but we're, I think we can be ready to, to jump on and, uh, be, be a big part of that, so, um, I did wanna mention that Cory Rota, who is in the audience, uh, is also, uh, he's kinda really been the, the instigator, the starter of this conversation, and I wanna really voice my appreciation for his beginning leadership and hopefully ongoing leadership as it moves forward. He's here tonight just to kinda watch the process and maybe, probably be back in the future to, to address the council more officially down the road, um, but, uh, the only other thing I had was, um, regarding the, the parking, um, zoning, um, I think maybe there, this, you know, like, we haven't had more zoning things this year than record time, you know, that we need more, but maybe there is an opportunity there to address that in the future, because I think there was kind of some discussion regarding the inappropriateness of a hundred and twenty-five parking spaces for this, for that bu, business, so maybe we need to look at that and revisit that, maybe better define what certain businesses' requirements are, so, just a thought. That's all I have.
Thank you, and the, the rec center meeting on the fourth is at what time?
Six-thirty, six-thirty.
Here.
Right here, right now, yeah.
Uh, city administrators, report?
Thank you, Your Honor, uh, two quick items for the sake of our time that are coming forward, uh, from me during your budget, from the notes that I have found, during your budget sessions, you talked a lot about your five-year capital plan. Um, I have a, I have a draft copy of that with some examples, uh, to be able to present, the reason that we are going to be able to present it at this point, uh, at your next work session, is to get input so that stat, if it is in the format that you would prefer, and it is addressing all of the, all of the questions and concerns that you have, that then, uh, we could make any required changes, take, bring it back to staff, develop it over the interim time up till budget, and then have that as something, as a five-year plan. So, the idea would be able to give you a five-year, uh, a five-year capital plan proposal along with your next budget, so, uh, you would have long-term capi, and then we could go farther out and look at history along with that. Um, but, uh, that's generally developed at this point, so I look forward to presenting that to you. Additionally, we'll, at the same meeting, we'll ask your input on dashboard metrics, uh, with regard to, for the dashboards, it's essentially brief, uh, graphs and the like that show the activity within the community. If you talk about the police department dashboards, they could say, "Okay, um, calls for service in a particular time." In order for us to manage things, we measure, and I say that a lot, but in this case, it provides council an ongoing general idea of activity within the city, so as we're making decisions and we're seeing trends, that we can be reactive to those. Um, so we'll present those as a format and have a, and, and ask for your input in terms of a discussion as to what things, what items you feel are important for you to know, uh, and we'll have recommendations from staff at the same time. And then, we can again, take those items and develop them completely for you, and then begin to present those in the appropriate timeframe. But right now, that's all I have.
Nice.
Thank you. Yeah, I've, I've had a terrific opportunity, and I know some of you have been able to talk with Tony, uh, for extensive periods of time, and, and, uh, he's, we did, we did good, we spring him some new ideas to the city of Riverton, and, and, uh, as we, uh, work, work through some of our, um, challenges in the next few months, we'll have some different perspective.
Your Honor, may I add one more thing, just, and, and to echo another comment-
Okay.
-that was made here, um, in this short period of time I've been here, this is actually exactly three weeks.
Three weeks?
Three whole weeks. It doesn't, it doesn't seem like that long, so I, I think that's a good thing. However, um, uh, Councilman Peterson made a comment about, um, you know, the work that's been done on the snow plan, and I've been able to see that from the onset, and I've seen that with, with each and every member of staff, and I, and I've been really appreciative and impressed with the level of service that he's providing, top to bottom. Um, I could not be, you know, as the new person, you, we've mentioned, I get to see it with new eyes, and I will tell you in no uncertain terms, uh, I am absolutely impressed with, with the service that this community is receiving, um, I can't say that enough. So, thank you for hiring me, 'cause this is great. Thank you, I'm done.
You bet, thank you. Okay, uh, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yay. I think we have a majority just with that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight twenty-nine.